Looks like Counselor Ballard, Counselor Scott, myself, and Counselor Johnson's here. We'll excuse Frank tonight. He had some business that he's attending to. Can we get you to give the invocation, Cecil? Do you mind doing that for us?
Our Heavenly Father, as we gather together tonight, we're thankful for thy many blessings upon us. We're thankful to live in this part of the the United States, and we're thankful for the opportunity that we have to work together and to strive to accomplish the good things for our community and for the area here. We are thankful to live in this area and to be able to enjoy the beauties of the world around us. Wilt thou bless us this night that we may be able to accomplish the works that need to be done for the improvement in the the working, the workability of our community so that we can work together for its improvement and for our desires to grow and to better ourselves here. We ask these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
You want to follow us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move into the public comment. Part of the meeting, if there's any comments on stuff. Part of it down in the
Um, yeah, that should be through this, but that's, it's not going to basically get out.
Yeah, we'll just go ahead.
Because I don't think, do you have any papers? Did anybody sign this?
Yeah, we got one here. We have a public comment form here from Ted Johnson.
Just in light of the agenda, I wanted to express a sincere thank you to our police department. I had a situation a few months ago that was pretty, pretty serious. They responded very professionally, very intelligently, and took what was going to be probably a very difficult situation and, and calmed it down. It ended up turning out very well. I won't get into specifics, but I just wanted to express my appreciation for all they do.
Thank you. That's all of the public comment period there.
Once we go on to the agenda, there's no more public comments. So if anybody has anything to say.
Yeah, we'll open that up, and if there's anybody else that wants to voice their opinion or, or has anything to say, we'll open that up for a minute. We'll allow you three minutes. Okay, we'll move, we'll move on. We need to approve the agenda for June twenty-fifth, minutes from June thirteenth, and the payment.
I make a motion that we approve the consent items, agenda, June twenty-fifth, minutes for June thirteenth, and approval of the payment report for June twenty-fifth.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
As far as the report, I, I'd just like to thank our office staff and, and council members and the police department, everybody for this week. It's been a really tough week trying to get this budget straightened out and make quick money we have go around. It's, it's pretty tight. We appreciate the, the work that the police department has done here. We're just looking at a lot of different options. I think we're going with the best option that we have right now. Anyway, we'll, we'll move on down into some of these discussion items. If Ted would like to come up and do a discussion on our budget.
You'll have a copy of the, of the budget as?
This one?
No, it's, it should say
The newest version? How's the?
That's the new budget reflecting what the Lars accountant or consultant has added to in light of the budget that was approved from the previous, previous meeting. A few items that I wanted to, to bring up with regards to the budget that's kind of making it
We didn't approve that budget in the last meeting.
No, we approved positions that were, that were reflected into the budget.
Okay.
And so the additional staff and the additional personnel are now reflected in this draft budget.
It's the one with the
It's called tentative, yes.
Okay.
And so the initial one was called a draft, then we go to tentative, and then there will be another final stage. And the final stage will probably, we were hoping to have it done before fiscal year end, but it will not happen. Lars is in Finland, and it'll, he won't be able to get that done before the fiscal year, which has happened before. It's not a major item. As you look at the budget, I'd like to kind of, there's some summary pages that are probably more important, but in background, our revenues, Huff is our, for dealing with the roads and such, it's down, and it'll probably go down a little more is what they're projecting. Growth in the, growth in the, in Arizona has been less than it was projected, and so there's been a little bit of decrease there. So we have a decline in income that we, we, we've got used to. And so the state transaction privilege tax was up to two, two point five percent, but then we had a decrease in the urban revenue sharing, U R E, of a point one, one percent, one percent less. And state income tax is lower than projected. They estimate a nineteen percent decline. And the vehicle license tax is up eighteen percent. So as, you, you've got to realize that those are things that are not reflected in the budget. These are just things that I'd found out after, and so we used past going forward as best, you know, on the projections, but we didn't have this information. So we, we probably will have less revenue than what we hoped. Now, what we're hoping
On page five of thirty-two, line ten dash thirty-four dash eighty-two, what is perpetual care?
And I wish Lars was on the phone with us so he could give it to you.
It's a little far from Finland.
What, what page is that on?
Page five. It's the sec, it's the first general revenue.
Five, the five hundred dollars, I, I do not know what that is.
Oh, I mean, it's
It's five hundred dollars and it's
Negligible. I was just curious what perpetual care was.
Charges and service, that's under the general revenue, but it's under seminary plots. I would, I would assume that it was just the general care. But I, I would refer that to Lars when we, with the five hundred dollar. With regards to the budget, you know, there are documents that are, they're a tentative adoption that have, I'm not just reading this directly from an email. The official tentative budget is on the state auditor general forms, which the council will have to adopt. So we'll be adopting that. At the meeting, we will have council decide when to hold a public meeting on final budget. So we'll have another meeting similar to this where the final budget will be, where you'll say final. In turn, it can, it can be the earliest two weeks after adoption, but before that will be published in the newspaper once a week for two consecutive weeks to advertise for a public hearing. So there's some steps there that we, we have to follow, and, and we learned that because of some of the audit findings and such. There was also a clarification on the law enforcement. The, the, the law enforcement submitted a, an amount, and they were correct, and Lars made a, an adjustment for that, and it was, but in the end, there was still, it was twenty-one thousand dollars light, but it was not the five hundred and thirteen thousand. So they did, he did find and make a correction on that.
That was under personnel.
Yes, under personnel, and that's this document right here.
That's the, that would be the employee benefits that we were wrong on.
Yes, that's the email dated June twenty-second, and it's from Lars Johnson clarifying the, the change that he made in the budget so that the law enforcement would actually get greater credit. So that, that helped in that situation. Also, last week when we approved a position, I researched a little bit about the Arizona labor laws. And, and Lars kind of tuned me into this, and Arizona law, a part-time employee, if you pay thirty hours, they have to have benefits, thirty or more, so they'd have benefits. And then we also found out that there's a rule in Arizona called the twenty-twenty rule. That means if you have worked twenty hours, you have to have a pension. So we approved a position that we said would be twenty hours or more. I mean, twenty hours or less, but it needs to be nineteen or less. And so when we, when we posted it, we, we will have them sign a statement that'll, that even though we posted twenty, the actual amount will be nineteen. Does that, does that make sense? And that's for the, the clerk that will be helping the law enforcement with theirs.
So just from my slow brain, twenty hours, they have to be on pension, thirty or more, they have to have
Benefits, yeah. So to not have any benefits at all, it takes, you can't go over nineteen hours in a payday, pay week.
Now, is that, that's not the same as our, our code says, right?
What's that?
Our code is different, right?
Yes, and this is
Our city code.
This is from June ninth, twenty-twenty-four, Arizona labor laws, which explain that.
So we're going to have to revisit our code, get it
And you'll have a copy of that. You may not have a copy of it. I have them right here. That pretty much covers the, the, the budget and where we stand, but we also have, relating to the budget is the audit. And we are at that stage where the audit has to be submitted by this, this Friday. And so it is now in a draft stage, and they will be updating it into a final stage. So I have a copy of this. It's, it's big, but it's I put summaries on the top, and if you could review this during the
Yeah, I've got one here for him.
And then we, we'll have the mayor will approve it for us to send to the state auditors.
It'll give you nightmares.
I, I went into one item on there. On the journal entries, and it, it kind of tells you where the summaries are, the little yellow tab. It'll save you a lot of time so that you don't have to read the body of, because it's a lot of the, it's just a revised kind of a budget analysis. But if you could read those, that tab, there's four items, a draft financial statement, a draft A E L R, and then a draft findings, and the M D A template, which is what will go to the state.
So on, if I understand right, there was like twenty-eight specific things that we had to address, not even counting this. Were a lot of those taken care of?
Yes, so we contacted the previous accountant, Margaret, and put them in, and Lars and Margaret worked together, and, and they couldn't find what they were looking for to take off those significant findings, but but they did work together to try to resolve that. And then there's a lot of items that we will be continuing to pursue once we can have the staff to pursue them. They're not, the audit findings, even though they're, they're there, and they may look like they're being ignored, they're not going to be. But there, there's a lot of good recommendations that they gave us, and a lot of those have been put in place when Tracy Goodall was here, and she was working very hard on trying to get those done, in particular on our accounting and our receipts and our other things. So that they, we're going in the right direction and going there fairly fast. And now we're at that point where you approve or discuss the budget, and I'll just turn the plan back to you, but that's the report.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the effort you put into that. Do you guys mind if we switch item, item number one to last and move these other items up? Then we'll have them all together
Okay.
with what we've just talked about. So we'll go to action item number two, discussion of possible action regarding defund police, and go to county contractor significantly reduce police force. And it's what, what this is all about is with this budget, we're having a hard time getting where we need to be with our budget. So we, we had looked at several other ways to make this thing work, and we've had a lot of public comment throughout the week, and we've done a lot of research on our own as far as what would happen with the county if we was to, to put them back in here over us. Any other counselor members have thoughts on this?
So, so basically, we've got three, three options. If you keep doing what you've been doing, you're going to keep getting what you've been getting, but that applies not only to today, that applies to four or five or six years ago. And we, we actually reached out to the county a few years ago and just said, hey, so what, what are our options? And at that time, and, and still today, you've got to put in a request for performance, and then the county will review it, and then they will determine how many, how many officers you may get. When we talked to them before, they said that, that, like, the, the officer that lives here now would not be included in that. They could send somebody else. At that time, it was two hundred thousand dollars per officer to have the contract. So if, so if you want it dependent on the coverage, and, and I, I actually thought there might be people show up here tonight with pitchforks and torches, but so far, nobody has. But the, the money thing, I also talked to the county sheriff who lives here and just said, would, just said, what are, what are your thoughts? And he said, I honestly don't know if the county still does that, but I, I spoke with another town that did that, that it's a small town like us. They had a police force of six, and they were struggling with their budget, and they chose to make a contract with the county, and the county agreed to, this is not Coconino County, but the county agreed to four officers. And they said that the, the methamphetamine and the drug deals and the crime just got completely out of hand. And the other problem that they ran into using county contract personnel was the town had no say in what went on. They, it's like, well, you're, we're here and we're going to do it the way we want. And that particular town did that for three years till crime got so bad, and they were overrun with meth, that the town got back together and said, we'd like the police force again. And so they, they have six officers again, and, and they said they're very happy with that. The only reason I looked at this was, let, let's just make some comparisons for money. And it's been three or four years ago since I talked to the sheriff of Coconino, and he's not even the same guy that's in there today. But you were looking at that time at two hundred thousand dollars per officer. That's, that's out the door, though. You, you don't provide nothing. They provide the guns and the money and whatever. So if you wanted three officers through the county, it would be a minimum of six hundred thousand for three officers. If you want four officers, it'd be a minimum of eight hundred thousand. And, but what was interesting to me is when I talked to the, the deputy sheriff that lives here, he goes, are you actually thinking about doing that? And I said, we're just, we're just looking at everything. And he said, there is no way you can do that. He goes, if you expect me to do it, he quote, he said, I've had my ass handed to me. I'm getting twenty hours of overtime, and he goes, I can't keep up. And, and he said, if you choose that, you will not get the coverage that you've been getting. So I, I think that was, was kind of a compliment. So, so we could choose to say, we're not going to deal with the guns and the cars and the liability and the gas and the drama and everybody being upset, but if we turn it over to the county, it'll be the county. And, and what they say will be what happens. The other thing, the other thing you could do is just say, well, let's, let's stay in charge of our own police force. Let's cut the police force down to maybe two or three people. But I, I would have to say, let's, let's take a, a look at what that looks like. And if you lived here five years ago, if you walk down the streets right now, or you walked down the streets five years ago, you're going to see a totally different thing going on. And, and the other thing is, I don't know if people in town, it's like, well, what the hell do the cops do? Well, they, they go on, I, it's almost comical, the domestic disputes that they have to be involved in. And I can't even say, I can't even say details, but I know some people, and while, while they're on this domestic dispute, now they found a dead body over here, and a group of Chinese national military aged young men drove through town going eighty miles an hour. And there's, the, people may think that all they do is give tickets, but I, I think that there may be a lot more going on in town than people realize. So if you look back to what we had, and in saying that, in support of the two officers who were here, I think there's a lot of us in town, myself included, that ripped on those two officers. It's like, well, what are you doing? Where are you going? Well, they were, they were getting kitty cats out of trees. They were getting in between a stepdaughter, trying to take crap out of her stepdad's house. They were dealing with all that. And, and on top of that, the town had policies back then where, where they couldn't buy the guns they needed, they couldn't buy the bullets they needed, they couldn't go to the trainings they needed. And, and, and myself included, and I probably owe all of those guys an apology, but they were not able to do their job because the, the town did not have their back. And there, my family and myself personally got, got to experience what it looks like if you have a gang of thugs living in town. And, and that's part of the reason I'm here today, is I said never again. That's as long as I have a voice. So some people say the police department is our pet, and written by Christie Riddle's own hand, our town mission statement says, we are a town that provides water and services, fire, and police. And that's our simple town statement. And I, and I think if you, it's pretty simple. If you don't have air, you die in three minutes. If you don't have water, you die in three days. And if you don't have food, you die in three weeks. And it's not our responsibility as a town to provide the food, but i- if you look at Abraham Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, the very bottom one is your basic physiological needs. You got to have food, you got to have water. The next one up is you need, you need shelter and safety. So the problem with that is, once you get your, your basic physiological needs met, and then you've got a cave to live in, there's somebody else coming to get your stuff. And so, so all of those three basic needs, the need for basic physiological needs, safety, all, all the other things are included to have a happy life, but if you don't have those basics, so that's what, that's how I look at the police and our fire department and our public work. So that's where I'm coming from. So let me finish real quick. The, the other option would be to reduce the police force. And I've talked to other towns that are four, five, six times bigger than us, and, and they have six or eight policemen. And so people say, well, why would Fredonia need four or five policemen? And it's not necessarily the population, but there's twenty-four hours in the day, whether you have a thousand people or whether you have ten thousand people, and there are certain times of the day that things go on, so that's what we're looking at. So as we put it down as discussion of possible action, but I've spent a lot of time on this, as have other people. And I think that we, so let me, let me clarify one other thing, too. The, the state of Utah requires that every town has seven percent of their operating funds in a contingency fund. And the state of Utah also says, if you have more than fifteen percent in your contingency fund, you have to lower taxes. So the state of Utah regulates their town, you can't have this, or you can't have this. But it's pretty much a, a basic rule in accounting, and the, the city of Phoenix, they, they had a statute that said, we will require four point five percent contingency fund of your total operating costs. And that four pi, four point five percent comes from FEMA. If, if the crap hits the fan and everything falls apart, you need to have the ability as a town to exist for forty-five days on that, on that contingency fund. And that's where that, that's where that four point five percent comes in. And I know the last four years, we spent a lot of money because there, we were not up to par on some things. We als, there were also things that we spent money on that we did not know, where you don't, you, you got to have a gun and a baseball bat if you're going to be a policeman. If you don't at least have a gun and a baseball bat, you're in trouble. So anyway, looking back at it, I think the track record shows that we have spent money on the police department, but I, I think we're at a point, and I think the concern for some people in town, and the concern for our accountant was, we spent this, but we had one officer. Then we spent this, but we had two. Then we spent this, and they say, where does it end? Well, with our, our contingency fund situation, we do have to get a hold of it, and we do, do, we do need to curtail some spending. And it's not just the police department, though, is what people need to understand. There's other places that we need to look at. So as far as making any radical decisions, if you look at some of the, if you look at the budget that our accountant put together and look at this, there's also some options and some other things that we could do that I'd rather not make some radical decision tonight. I think I'd like to go back to the drawing board because I do think that there's some things that we can do and, and not just throw the, the baby out with the bath.
I would like to mention something, and chief, if I go too far, throw something at me. I don't know how many people know, in the last month, two months, they have, our police officers have They have, our police officers have. Confiscated. How many thousand pills? You don't need to tell us. Because it's approaching with the fentanyl. Now, fentanyl is deadly. They have made enough stops and whatnot like that. I'm, I'm trying to give you as much as I can without walking on them. It's approaching the thousands. And uh. Fentanyl is deadly. It's not just a bad drug, it's deadly. And uh. That kind of stuff doesn't get told to the community. We're making exceptions. We've all talked about it. We've all said that uh. The things that they, these people have done for us. In the last two months. Uh. Fentanyl is deadly. If you take. One grain of it, and I mean one little tiny grain, too much, you're dead. And uh. Our community sits right on the junction from major highways, from two or three states right here. And uh so. I'm not gonna say much because I, I just. I hurt.
Can you have anything you'd like to comment on?
Yeah, I, I think we need to think about this real strong, and I think we need to. Come to the r- reality. We, we gotta make some big cuts or something.
Yep.
And, and I, I, I. My opinion is I do not want the county to take over our police department. I do not like that to hear that at all. I'd rather have it in-house, where it's all, where we can take care of our own. And that's all I can say.
So there's probably a lot of you wondering, well, why'd you even put this on the agenda if, if uh you've already made your mind up? Um personally, I was hoping a lot of the naysayers would be here tonight and be able to hear some of this budget stuff and. There's only one way that you can talk about it is by putting it on the agenda. And this is our way of getting it put on the agenda so that we could talk about it. Um. Personally, I'm, I'm really happy with what's going on with the police department. They have been bending over backwards to make cuts in the, in their proposed budget. Um. And we're still talking to them about cuts and, and they're, they're working on their end. We're working on our, on our end. And I like Dirk. And the other council members. I think we need to uh. Take a step back this week and, and take another look at this budget. I think there's some other things that we can do. So that we're not put in that situation. Maybe we go through these other ac- action items and then, and we can make some motions on what, what we wanna do.
Yeah, let's just table it for now and, and, cause we're gonna have some more meetings on it and. Or motions and everything will be made, so.
Wait, one last thing. If, i- it's hard to stand up in public and make a fool of yourself. I do it all the time. But if you, if you've got something to say. And if there's somebody watching on TV and you're, and you're cussing us. Write a letter. We have, we have complaint forms, but um. I'll tell you, I'm here because I've got a personal agenda, not for myself, but for our town. And uh but at the same time, we represent you. So if you guys have something you want and we don't know it, there's, it's impossible to know what you don't know, so speak up or write a letter. I'm done.
It all comes down to the twenty-four hour day deal. I mean. You've gotta have that coverage, and there's no way to do it with up to. Unless you get up around four or five officers, there's no way that you can get the coverage that you need. And so that's kinda where we're at. We're stuck between the coverage and the budget. So we're trying to figure out a way that we can make it work for both sides and. We would like any comments or suggestions or whatever you guys are willing to give us because we are between a rock and a hard spot on this thing. And uh. We wanna show our support to the police and thank them for what they've done and, and uh I think they've done a heck of a job. So we'll move down to uh. Uh discussion, possible action regarding revisiting the appro- approved positions by the city council on June thirteenth. Um. Ted talked a little bit about that, about the part-time stuff that we're gonna have to talk about, uh adjust, make some adjustments and. Find out what's going on with that.
Was there anything specific on that, Ted?
Well, I, we, it's posted, but uh what we're gonna do is it does save twenty hours, but when it come in, we're gonna make sure that they understand it's nineteen.
Okay.
I think we're clean on that, and then it's just a matter of the other positions that we approved. You don't make it come forward or?
Uh, whatever you got.
Just on earth.
Um, I think we're pretty good on, on, on the positions as far as them being reflected in the budget that, and we. The nineteen hours is, is fixed, a- and it's reflective in the budget. It's the other, other positions that uh we approved. Uh we were hoping to get it down, you know, further down than what we, what we did, but it didn't come true. And so we're faced with that reality. Um, o- one thing that uh I would like to emphasize too, again, I, I did use the open forum is, but the. The police are uh, you know, are just identical. Um, you know, having it tabled with, you know, I understand that you, you wanna get input, but. It's, you know, the, the budget's there and we have, we have money, but it's, it's just a matter of how long does our savings last? And uh if we, you know, if, if we can cut in other places. But it's not capital. It has to be operational, O N M type stuff. That's where it gets you. Because I, I went through two layoffs in the, in Salt River. And they're ugly. They're not what you wanna do, and we don't wanna get to that place in three years or four years and just kick the can down the road.
So clarify something for me. Uh, the, the capital outlay does come straight off the bottom line, but. The, the operating costs, is there, is there a state statute? So if you can leave your contingency fund alone. Um and not dip into it, but y- where, where does this formula come from? That your operating cost versus um capital outlay have to be a certain thing?
Well, I'm, I'm, I, I came from the power plant and I don't know the town like we talked to today, you know.
Businesses are different than municipal. Doesn't mean we can spend money just like.
O N M, uh it was ex- o- o- operation and maintenance, same thing as the. Uh just a different term, I'm sorry. Uh the, our operating budget was. Extremely scrutinized on additions because we went from a thousand employees at one time. Down to eight hundred, down to six hundred and down to four hundred. So we witnessed that, that hurt uh with families, attrition. And what, you know, my concern is, are we gonna face that three years from now? Now, we have a business here that they're, they're on the agenda. Um that's gonna help us. Uh what they plan on with their grocery store, which they're gonna be presenting here in a few minutes, that's gonna help. We have three subdivisions that are, you know, that look like are gonna be coming in, but. One thing that Fredonia doesn't have that I don't think Fredonia realizes is, there's no, when we pay our state. Uh our property tax, Fredonia doesn't get any of that back. It goes to the state and the county. There is none that comes to Fredonia, and Fredonia would have to vote on that. We get sales tax, but we do not get anything from the property tax.
If, one thing to add to that, and again, not to beat the dead horse of the police department. But the police department brings in excess of five hundred thousand and the state takes sixty-seven percent of that. Um and the track record was this year, it's gonna be around two hundred and thirty. Some, some of the numbers that we had though, either there's been money come out of that before it came back to the town over and above the sixty-seven percent. And the, the police department is not the only department that brings money into the town. The water department does, our wastewater does, our power company does. But, but in uh, in support of them though with all that, that. And even in this year's budget, they actually put a lower, a lower anticipated number. Uh for the, the police department than what they did this year, and we do not do quotas, never, never have, never will. But knowing, knowing what goes on out there, I'm, I'm fully confident that they'll bring in at least what they brought in.
Yes, and uh Serena supplied me with uh. The, the, these, the law enforcement. They're extremely busy. I witnessed some stuff on the backstreet here last night. And we witnessed it on this, on this, on the streets. But Serena got me some uh, I mean, if you can imagine, twenty-three hundred and sixty-nine citations in twenty-twenty-three, do you mind me giving those values?
I'll, I'll review the numbers.
Okay. But they're extremely busy and they, and they do a lot. And uh I, I'll let Serena defend that, but we did look at, and you have that in front of you. What, what it would cost if we cut different positions. And I, I looked at all positions. Uh from maintenance to clerical to the, the support we need in our office here. A deputy marshal, all of it, so you have the value, so that you can see what it would cost.
Thank you.
But I'm hoping that our, our incomes will come up with the, what we have going right now.
Ed, I think we might be able to work with some stuff.
I had, I had a question regarding the twenty hours, and I'm not arguing, okay? I'm just wondering. At one point, when I was at this, at the school and when I was at the town office. There was a time limit on that. If it was, if it was a temporary position, they could work thirty hours. And not have to have benefits if it was less than six months, a year or something?
Changed.
It, has it changed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we researched that.
Okay, okay.
And that was Lars' thing, maybe that changed.
I know I have a, quite a few questions on this budget that, I think Lars. W- w- we need him here so we can ask those questions. There's, there's a lot of the uh. Deductions that come out of there, like for, for example, guns and uh uniforms and stuff like that that. That we can put out over three or four years. And uh. It's all put in here at once. I mean, it's not a huge amount, but every dollar is gonna help. And uh I wish he was here so we could ask him some of this stuff, but. Uh he'll be back and we can talk about this a little bit more. I, I think we're gonna be able to get where we need to be with this. We'll move on down to discussion uh for. Discussion, possible action regarding the increase in I, in I G A. For additional full-time clerk and increase in the judge's salary. Do you mind coming up and sharing?
And just to address uh Dirk, some of your numbers. I have all the numbers here. I shared them with Ted. Um, so last year, just, just as a. Just a little overview, the court took, the court received filings from the marshals or for the police department, two thousand three hundred and sixty-nine. So there was almost twenty-four hundred citations issued, which is so much more than it was, you know, each year. Um total fines processed was five hundred and fourteen thousand. What came back to the town general fund is two hundred and thirteen, five ninety. Which is forty-one percent. When you're talking sixty-seven percent, Dirk. So what happens is.
Stuck in my head.
The sixty-seven is a number, but we have to assign a base fine to every, to everything that the officer cite. We have a base fine, and then from that fine, there's the base fine. Sixty-seven or sixty-eight percent of that base fine goes back to the state. But then there's all these other additional funds on top of it, so our base fine, Dusty. If I'm thinking like a base fine of fifty dollars, the total fines, what, couple hundred dollars? Yes, so the ba- the sixty-seven percent is just off that base, then we add to it. So when I give you the reports that tell you how much comes back to the town, which is, last year was forty-one percent of what we took in. That's simply what comes back to the general fund. There are also funds that come back for law enforcement. There's like highway funds. There's other funds the town gets. But we're just reporting specifically what comes to the general fund to be used in the general budget. So the town does get more. Than what we say. It's just, if I was to give you, you would have a multiple huge page report from us, which we can provide if you'd like to.
You, you've done that before.
Yeah, so sixty-seven percent is of the base fine.
We had had a question, the two hundred and thirty thousand comes back to the general fund.
General fund, yeah.
And, and the police department received seven hundred.
No, they received much more than that. That might have been on one month.
Yeah, well, there, there was like one thing, maybe it wasn't seven hundred, maybe it was seven thousand or something.
They get something, cause there, there's, in, in our funds, there's gonna be like uh police, peace officers equipment fund that comes back to the town. There's, you know, there's a whole bunch, and some go to the state for DNA testing, some go for victims' rights, but. It's just sixty-seven percent or sixty-eight percent of that base fine. Okay, so back to addressing um the agenda item. Um, in twenty nineteen, we co-located the two courts together, and that's when Dusty was a twenty-hour employee. And so we entered into an I G A with the county for court services. And she went over, we, we are all o- located over at the justice court now where we have.
At, at that time, was the county paying Dusty's salary?
No, the town was paying Dusty's salary.
The whole time?
The whole, well, until we did the I G A. And then the county pays, you, the town pays a lump sum to the county and it covered Dusty's salary and some facilities. Um and, and the agreement was, in that original I G A, when filings reached a thousand, we would renegotiate. Well, the next year, filings reached a thousand. We went from like three, four hundred a, a year to a thousand fairly quickly. So in twenty twenty-one. Which we'd been negotiating since twenty twenty, Dusty went to forty hours and the I G A was increased. And that's the last time we've increased it, and that was when we hit a thousand filings. Well, we've now hit twenty-three sixty-nine last year, and we're on track to be over two thousand this year. And that's why we're asking for another forty-hour full-time employee. And we talked about it last meeting, but we weren't specifically on the agenda. And I, I provided all the information last, last meeting. But it looks like it was, I, and Ted, it got put in the budget, correct? Those numbers were put in the budget. The current amount for two full-time employees would increase. Um would bring our total I G A to one sixty-one, eight fifty-two, and it's on our budget page there. We put those numbers in the budget. And we need, we needed another full-time employee a year and a half ago, and we did come, but we just missed the budget cycle last year. I think we came in August. So we came back in January to remind you that with budget season coming, we're gonna need to plan for it, and so now we're asking you to execute what we really need with, which is another full-time clerk. Dusty's currently working at least a minimum of twelve hours a day, just to keep her head above water with all the filings.
So that, so. Enlighten me on the court I G A then, the new employee at forty hours. Will the town pay all that, or does the county pay part of that? Because not all, not all of what you do is just town stuff.
So.
That's a question, not a statement.
Yeah. Uh well, are you talking about the, the, the employee?
So like, so like under judicial, under court I G A, it's one sixty-one, eight fifty-two?
That's for two employees, plus there's a, a nominal amount for supplies and facility. I don't know if they charge for facilities. Let me pull out our old I G A. I have the, I have the most recent agreement, so I can tell you what they're charging. I have it here. I brought it with me. So, alright, so. Make sure I'm looking at the right one. There's our original. Okay, original, and here's our amended. Okay, so last, last time, for forty hours. It was a total of seventy-six. Sixty thousand was salaries, which was the base salary plus the medical benefits, the E R Es. So the salary was a total of sixty thousand. Um there was fifteen hundred for office supplies, computer and printer, which we rent from the Supreme Court, seven hundred and fifty. Travels, about a thousand, then indirect costs were in. It was a grand total of seventy-six, so.
That, that's everything.
That's everything. So we're doubling, it'd be about one sixty-one, is what the county's estimating.
What about the county cases? Do they, do you guys try them or do they go downstate or?
County cases go to the justice court, which is handled in the same building, but that was Tina and Summer handled justice court. Tina's left, so we're looking to replace those lost hours, and those are one hundred percent covered by the county.
Okay.
So the court, the court. So the court, the court combines staff, so county pays all the staff, but the I, the, the city reimburses the county for some of that, like our, our supplies and salaries for the, the municipal court employees. But we're all co-located in the justice court building. But we handle all of county, all of DPS and all of Fredonia Marshals and also game and fish in that building.
But those two, other two employees.
Other two employees. Now, you're going to get a little bit of crossover because if Dusty answers the phone and it's someone for the justice court, she'll process a payment.
She should hang up.
Yeah, she should hang up, right? Summer, Summer, Summer's probably doing quite a bit of justice court. On the weekends, whatever clerks available comes in to handle whatever case. And then the justice court handles any felony filings through the Fredonia Police Department because magistrate court has no jurisdiction over felonies, but justice court can, can at least in, uh, initial appearance them and see them. So that's what we're asking is to have that position approved. Um, I have talked to the county. The board of supervisors goes on vacation for the entire month of June, so they wouldn't actually have an IGA ready to sign until probably August. But we want to make sure it gets, if possible, get approved on the budget so we're ready to go when we get that IGA ready to be signed off of.
That's what's, just a side note, their, their bidding process is through part of the agreement. Is the county will, will post or we don't post it on the Fredonia website. It's, it's in the agreement that we don't. Just so that everyone knows in the room that, that they're not going to be an exception on how it's bid. They have to bid through the, through the county process.
For, for the employee that we will then pay?
Because they're technically county employees. They're under county benefits.
So I'm, I'm coming up with eighty-two thousand, one hundred and fifteen, and you said that it would be like seventy-six thousand? Was the extra?
Well, here's, here's what I received from our deputy court administrator. She said she just received the numbers from HR and it looks like the amount for the new position would be approximately seventy-seven, eight forty-seven annually. Um, and then, so with the current amount included, the total overall cost looks to be about one sixty-one, eight fifty-two. Or forty thousand, four sixty-three quarterly, and you pay that quarterly to the county. That's paid quarterly to the, by the town to the county.
And then the, is the salary established? Is that already established? Is that, since it goes through the county?
It, yeah, it's on, it's under the county listings. And actually, based on what I saw through the town, the county pays less than the town for a starting clerk. So, yeah. Which that didn't happen a couple of years ago. The county always paid really well, but the town's boosted, yeah, so.
And so, eh, what happens if we say we're not going to approve that and you can't have the extra employee? Will Dusty be angry?
I'm ge- actually, I'm.
So I'm going to tell you what would happen. We would fail our audits. There is no way we could maintain the workload. We're already drowning and Summer, Summer picks up quite a bit for you, right, too? So, I mean, the county's already doing the work of the town. So we, you know, it's, it's already overlapping because Dusty can't handle it all. If it was to continue without another employee, we would get behind. We have to post payments every day. I mean, they're, we are legally bound to do things in a timely manner and we're, we get audited. We self-audit once a year. We get a main audit, a financial audit every three years. And we have an operational review at the Supreme Court every ten, which we just got notified. We're having it next month, so. We would get behind. At some point, the court could be seized because we wouldn't be complying with state standards, which means the state would take your court over and manage it. Simply don't have hours in the day and enough employees to handle, handle the amount of work coming in. And I will say, the, the citations we get from the officers are good. We're not getting, you know, if anyone in town thinks they're just writing bogus stuff, they're, they're not. We're, we are receiving a lot of work. Our, our numbers have gone up drastically in the past couple of years.
Okay. We'll kind of lump these three together as.
Okay, and the second, the second part of that was the judicial salary. Um, for the first ten years of, I don't know if we want to talk numbers, but for the first ten years, I made less than a pool cleaner as the judge. I never came and asked for a, for a raise. It was important to me that our, our staff got paid, that we got them up to where we need to be. Um, a couple of years ago I came and we did get it bumped up a little and we decided we would address it every year. And, um, for some reason it kept getting tabled. It had something to do with the contract not being. Anyway, so I'm coming back to say, I think we need to revisit that. We've put it in the budget, the numbers in the budget. If you want to look, I don't know if we want to.
Is that ten dash forty-two, eleven?
Ten dash forty-two. Oh, you're looking at the line item?
Page fourteen.
I don't have page numbers, but it would be.
Salaries and wages judicial.
Yep, that's the one. Yeah.
So there's the increase in that salary and then the extra employee, so.
And that, that salary, so judges' salaries in the county are based off of, um, there's called judicial productivity credits and they're based off of, um, how much, how many filings we use. And that salary that I've, that I've requested, that I've listed would be approximately thirty-five percent of a full-time presiding judge's salary, based off of the productivity statistics. So that's coming off the Arizona state statute for county judges. So I didn't just pull that number out of a hat. That's, that's with the productivity credits.
So this, this was presented at two meetings ago and it's been presented again tonight and it says discussion of possible action. Is this something we want to vote on?
Yeah, I, I think we need to move forward with that part of it.
Well, I, I make a motion then that we approve the forty hours for the new employee and the salary increase for the judicial.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Do we have a motion on the other two items?
Which ones?
Uh, discussion item two and three.
Uh, I just, uh, eh, I make a motion on num- well, on number two, we just said, let's just table that to come back to it.
Okay.
For number one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just want to finish these three things real quick and then we'll, you're, you're good, thank you. I didn't realize that's what it was. I thought it was just a zone change or something, the way it was on here. And I apologize about putting it clear to the end. So on, on three.
Uh, I, I make a motion to let the, well, we approved it. I make a motion to leave it the way it is. But we are, with the caveat, that we are going to go back through the budget and work on some stuff. But the, you know, though, the, the clerk position, I, I'm, I'm assuming that the, the stick in the mud here is the new officer for the police? Or did that include all the clerks?
There was three positions that were having a related with that.
The clerk for the office, the part-time clerk for the office manager for the police, and then the new officer, those three?
Yeah, and, and in support of what Serena just said about keeping up with audit, that was part of one of our audit findings, is not having a, a number of needed personnel so that we can keep up with that and be, have the checks and balances. And that same logic exists in the other, you know, in, in our office in here. If, if anybody goes, uh, leaves or is unsick, we're, we're sunk. We have two people. Cecil comes in on his own and I'm coming in on my own and, and it's, and one of the audit findings is just what Serena mentioned. We need to do something about having enough personnel to meet the needs.
So we, we made a motion and approved it, and I make a motion that that motion stands.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Does that include the other work position for the, in here? Are you, are you addressing that at the same time?
Yes.
So we've changed the, then?
Yes. Okay, and we'll move up to discussion item one. I apologize for dumping you back to the back of the deal.
This is hard for me to say. Many of you people in here don't know who the guy is sitting back there in the white cowboy hat. And I don't mean me. Uh, Matt Salmon is who it is. And if any of you are old enough like me, you remember that he was a state representative for several years and, uh, did a lot of good for the state. In fact, one of the things was is that he promised that, well, I'll only serve for so many years because I don't want to be a stick in the mud. And he kept his word. And now he's here representing another company that is trying to expand into our town and already has one facility, but now they want a second in here. Uh, I just wanted everybody to know a little bit about who he is. I'm not going to blow his horn. He can do that if he wants to. But, uh, my folks knew him when he was in the National House of Representatives. And so, Matt?
Thank you.
I guess he just gave you the floor.
I just sit down and shut up. Thank you very much. It's, it's really an honor to be here. Mayor and members of council, um, yeah, last time I was here, you might remember, we took three parcels and split them into two. And then that had to go back to the county for the new numbering. The new numbering's back and so what we're hoping is that the southernmost parcel of that would be rezoned from open space to, uh, commercial, so that we can commence building.
Okay. Has that been brought before, planning zoning? Do we know?
All of that was.
Oh, okay. I mean, the commercial part of it, being made commercial, okay.
Right.
Okay.
Right. That's it.
Awesome.
All right, thank you and thank you. Good to see you.
I make a motion that we approve rezoning the parcel numbers on Cowboy Drive in U S Highway eighty-nine A.
To commercial.
To commercial.
Do we have a?
I'll second.
We'll let him do it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed then? We'll get it right one of these days. Okay, thank you. Any of you have any items that you would want to put on the agenda? Let me know and we'll get them put on there. So we'll adjourn at, uh, eight oh six.
All know. We, we need to discuss, uh, incorporating, uh, like the south or east part of, of the sawmill. That needs to be on the agenda.
Right, for future items?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think we've put some stuff out today that's good news on that, so I'll talk to you about that.
Okay. Well, we may not need to go through that then. Okay?
So we'll adjourn at eight oh seven.